Good morning. We're going to call the March 3rd Scott County Board of Commissioners meeting to session. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of Texas, one nation under our individual justice.
Thank you so much. Item two, are there any amendments to the agenda? I don't think I saw any. Otherwise, we will let it stand as distributed. Item number three, approved minutes of the February 18th, 2020 county board meeting. Are there any additions, deletions, changes?
I'll move them. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the minutes? Otherwise, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Minutes approved. Item number four, we're going to, this is a great time for the meeting, a recognition of interested citizens. If you would like to address the board in any way, you've got five minutes at the podium for items that are not typically on the agenda. So if there are anybody that would like to take advantage, I see some folks. If there are others, why don't you just come on up, introduce yourself. We will give you the timer. I'll try to give you the, I'll try to give you the one when you've got one minute left.
Outstanding. Thank you.
Thank you.
So I have a prepared statement, so I'm just going to read through it and then I'll, if there's questions, obviously, I'll address them. My name is Kevin Lindo from Prairie Lake, Minnesota, and I represent a vast majority of Scott County citizens and supporters of the Constitution of the United States and the state of Minnesota. I speak for thousands more that demand their government affirm its commitment to upholding that Constitution and the rights therein. I am here today to formally petition Scott County Board of Commissioners to adopt a resolution of which I have provided, excuse me, affirming your commitment to both the Constitution and your constituents that their rights are not be infringed upon by a state or federal government. The resolution calls for the board to uphold and protect the Second Amendment rights of citizens of Scott County. The resolution also calls the board to declare Scott County a Second Amendment dedicated county and to oppose any infringement on the right of law-abiding citizens to keep and bear arms. Furthermore, this resolution calls for the board to refuse appropriation of county funds towards any mandate, law, policy, or order, or other directive which infringes upon the rights of law-abiding citizens to keep and bear arms. And lastly, this resolution calls for the county to use any legal means, including and without limitation, court action, to protect the Second Amendment rights of citizens of Scott County. This resolution does not call for the Scott County Board of Commissioners to amend, nullify, or ignore state law. This resolution calls for the board to dedicate themselves to the preservation of the constitutional law and to hold themselves accountable to action within the limits of their power to do so, which includes budgetary, policy, and restriction. The ability to appropriate resources and funding is within the scope of the board, as well as to act within legal means to protect the rights of citizens. This is the mandate of every officer of the state when they affirm their support for the Constitution and to discharge faithfully the duties of their office to the best of their ability and judgment. We demand that this resolution be adopted at the earliest possible board meeting in its entirety. Cursory amendments to this amendment, I'm sorry, excuse me, cursory amendments to this resolution specifically to the items, or for the items that remove commitment surrounding resource allocation and legal action in protection of civil rights are not acceptable to those I represent nor the citizens of Scott County. And I'll take your questions.
Thank you very much.
Sure.
Yeah, this is just a kind of a one-way conversation.
Sure.
So, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Kevin. I think we could say when we are, I think we're planning to have a workshop and a board meeting that'll take this issue up. So can our administrator give us some insight on that?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, yes, we've been working with the county attorney and the sheriff. We're planning a work session with the board. I think based on timing, it would be that first weekend, or the first week in April, the first board meeting in April, and it'd be a work session following the board meeting.
Did you have something?
I was just going to say, and I'll have more to say under my Commissioner report, but thank you to staff for setting aside some workshop time and noticing the public about this. Just oh, by the way, usually our workshops are very sparsely attended because it's really boring stuff, and we usually hold them in the side room. I'm sure staff will be aware that others may want to sit and listen to the discussion surrounding this, and so we may want to think about another place to have the board meeting, like, say, in here or something like that. And I'm looking forward to the discussion. As a participant in the Association of Minnesota Counties, I'm aware that this item is being discussed and requested of county boards all over the state, and so we'll certainly hear the issue out and talk through some of the ramifications. And yeah, it'll be a good, good workshop, and we'll see how we go from there.
It's definitely an item that is on our radar, and again, I love this time on the agenda for being able to have anybody be able to come up and address the board for any particular reason. So with that, is there anyone else that would like to avail themselves to the opportunity? Good morning.
Mr. Chairman, we'd asked if Lisa and Scott could come and just give about a five-minute update on the COVID-19.
Thank you very much.
That was five minutes each, right?
Each, apparently.
Give us the update, please.
Good morning, Commissioner Beer and Commissioners. Last time Scott and I were here, it was for the DWM, Scott County Delivers, and we were a little bit doomy and gloomy, and unfortunately, we're going to be a little bit of that today, but hopefully, we'll have some good news to share shortly. So we're going to do just an update of what's happening with coronavirus, a little bit of the situation to date, and I put an asterisk on that because that was yesterday as of 8:00 a.m., and the numbers have already changed. Right now, well, as of yesterday morning, we had about 87,000 cases worldwide. That's already increased by 2,000. Twenty-two thousand eight hundred and seventy-three deaths in China and 104 deaths outside of China, which has already increased by 42. In the U.S., we have 16 confirmed cases. Twenty-seven are presumptive, additional 27 presumptive positive, and that's those that have been tested by a public health lab, and they're really pending confirmation by the CDC. We've had two deaths in the U.S.
Lisa, can we interrupt?
Before you leave this slide, if you could put this a little bit in context, you know, with the regular flu, just so we know, I mean, these are, this is serious, and these are important numbers, but it's good to also put it in context to what we've always experienced in a right traditional flu season. So if you could, somewhere, I don't know if you're going to address that, but I think-
I wasn't going to, but I just want to confirm with Norine, I believe the death rate right now for the flu, or number of deaths, I think we've had about 15,000. Is that about right?
It's been off for a few days, but our deaths from influenza are much higher than from coronavirus.
At this point. And right now, the death rate in China is 3.5%. Our healthcare system is a lot stronger here, and it may be a lot lower because children have been shown to be almost asymptomatic or very minimal illness, so they're not really currently being counted in those numbers, so it could actually be a little bit lower. Our current death rate is 1.4%, but it's not widespread yet.
Mr. Chair.
The, yes?
There are people watching at home, believe it or not, and the comment was made from the back, how many people have died from the regular flu, and I don't know that the microphones picked that up. Could you reiterate that for the public record?
I think we're at about 15,000 so far.
Fifteen, this flu season in the United States.
This flu season, yeah.
Thank you for putting that on the record. Thanks.
So a little bit about response to the coronavirus. There's really three phases. Containment is the first one. That's when there's really kind of a handful of cases, when the first cases have been identified. And when it does, if, when it happens in Minnesota, if it happens, we would focus on isolation, contact investigation, quarantine of those cases. The next phase would be community mitigation, and that's when we would have multiple cases in different areas, multiple exposures, where they would start considering closing schools, canceling large events, promoting virtual school, virtual faith-based services. And then we would lead into pandemic management if it got that far, when we have widespread transmission, hundreds of cases from a variety of different areas. And we would look at really managing scarce resources, particularly with the hospital, continuing to encourage self-isolation, and providing support where we can. Currently, the federal approach is kind of multi-layered. They're really focusing on those travelers that are coming from areas that have coronavirus, and they're really trying to slow the spread of it right now and distribute the impact so we don't overwhelm the healthcare system. Daily, public health is receiving updates already on the healthcare system, number of available beds, because we are taxed right now because we're at high flu season. So we're already at a point where we really don't want to overwhelm them anymore. And the federal approach is to really kind of increase the spread into multiple countries. As of yesterday, it was in 58 countries. As of the afternoon yesterday, it was 64. So we really are going to try and minimize that, or slow it down. State response, right now, there are no cases in Minnesota, no cases. Health officials are working on the information sharing. Minnesota Department of Health the other day had a school nurse conference call with all the schools in the state. They are providing information for healthcare providers. There was also a health alert yesterday about their ability to test now and providing instructions on how people can be tested. And we've been coordinating a lot of communication between the state and local public health, multiple phone calls during the week. We're also working on containment strategies, isolation and quarantine. So anybody who comes from an area that might have coronavirus, when they arrive in Minnesota, they are being put on self-monitoring. So they are self-monitoring themselves for 14 days, taking temperatures and any symptoms they would report to the state. And also, any person under investigation. So that would be somebody that comes from an area that has coronavirus and/or has symptoms that would really establish criteria for lab testing. So they would be tested, and they would be in quarantine. Just as a little perspective, since February 20th, between February 20th and March 1st, the entire state only had about five persons of under investigation. There was an additional three yesterday, and there's three that they're testing today. The eight before today have all been ruled out. The state's also, again, coordinating state-level resources. They have established a joint information center, which our PIO, our person, our information officer, is participating in or has access to. And they're doing some state agency operations and planning coordination, again, coordinating with the healthcare sectors, and they're looking at, they're kind of dusting off the crisis standard of care framework that we created when we had Ebola. So that could be that if it does hit here and it's widespread, that they may delay elective surgeries, they would ration supplies, setting up emergency beds, et cetera. So they're just right now dusting off those plans to see if they might be needed again. On a local level, we have been planning. We have established an incident command structure. That's between public health, emergency management, employee relations, and our PIOs. I think some of our people are here that have been participating. If you want to just either stand up or raise your hand, just to identify yourselves. A couple people in the audience. We are updating our response plans, just to make sure that they're still current. We have inventoried our personal protective equipment to make sure we have enough for our regular day-to-day business, because we do use those regularly. And we're coordinating efforts between, between us. We're also maintaining situational awareness. We participate in calls with Minnesota Department of Health, calls with our Metro Health Medical Preparedness Coalition. We have information from our joint information center, and we will also be, I will be participating with local public health directors in a conversation on Friday with Representative Angie Craig, who wants to really be involved and possibly assist in whatever she can at a state policy level. We're working on containment. We have been coordinating with, our MDH has been coordinating with the local communities related to anybody that might be in self-monitoring or persons under investigation, and we are promoting standard guidance. So it's really standard flu precautions, very similar, cover your cough, wash your hands, don't touch your face. And very key to that is that staying home when you're sick. We are going to kind of move into another phase, the community mitigation phase, just as a precaution in our planning, and really kind of look at what are the critical functions that we have here in, in the county, develop plans for how staff might be able to function, given a scenario where some of our staff may be out sick. We're looking at, or will be looking at, some critical supplies and suppliers to make sure that we have some backup plans in place. Oh, I think this was your slide. Sorry.
You're doing a great job.
I'm sorry, I was supposed to turn that over to Scott. Well, I'm going to turn it over to Scott now. And really looking at what's our capacity for employees to work from home, and why don't you go ahead and take over?
All right. So first of all, ditto to what Lisa just said. We really want to just keep things in perspective. As the policy group, we're asking you to just be aware, observe what's going on, understand good information from hype, and understand that, yes, this is a significant thing that we need to be aware of and we need to watch. It's all over the news. It sounds horrible, but let's keep things in perspective. Most people who do get sick with this disease, with this illness, do have symptoms similar to a flu or a cold, and it's disruptive, but it's not as bad as far as the percentage of people who are actually dying. It's not as bad as what we're seeing with the flu right now. So we want to keep things in perspective. We're not asking for any action today. We're not asking for additional funding, any, anything other than trying to ensure that you as Commissioners and as the county's policy group, you stay alert and aware of what's going on. We are constantly evaluating the situation as it changes, and if we do reach a point where this becomes a larger event and we have widespread impact to the county, as a policy group, we'll be coming to you to make some of the hard decisions, just to kind of quantify and provide a realistic scenario for you. When the risk outweighs the reward of doing some nonessential functions, we need to think about making a change. And your role as a policy group is to make those hard decisions. A good example is talking about our Future Leaders Day. We love it. County employees love doing it. It's great for the students to come in. They get to really spend some quality time with staff and get close and get exposed to what it's like to work in the county. And we bring them all together in a pretty contained area and do a great programming piece. However, knowing that students tend to be asymptomatic but can still spread the disease, we may have to think about if it's reasonable to still offer that service, or if we offer it the same way we have in the past, or if we need to make some changes. So we're not providing risk to our county employees that's unreasonable. If you think about it again, we, we bring in a lot of potential carriers into a condensed area. We expose them to county employees in a close proximity, and then we bring our veterans in, who is our biggest at-risk group when they, they serve food. So these are some of the things that, we're not asking for any action at this point in time, but we just want you as a policy group to start thinking through, these are some of the things that we may have to evaluate if this does become a larger event. And our role is to continue to monitor that event and then provide you an update when it hits that point where we're hitting some triggers, where we need some political decisions made. So we want you to be aware of that, that that's coming, and just understand that our role is to really look at the continuity of operations for the county, look at what services we can look at in a different perspective, you know, which employees are able to do things like telework to keep services functioning, and at what point in time we would do some alteration of some nonessential services. Again, go for it.
Nope.
Oh, a good example would be our licensing area. You know, if there's a way to reduce some of the impact for the direct person-to-person contact to protect some of our staff, that's something we should start thinking about, how we do that. So as we evaluate our exposure, again, if this becomes a bigger event, we need to start having these conversations. And we're open to questions.
I have a question.
Yeah.
There's the expression, "The flu season," and I, my perception, I don't know if it's correct or not, the flu season usually starts somewhere in the fall and ends somewhere in the spring. Is this virus, do we know if this will have a season or not, or is that concept "flu season" even incorrect to begin with?
That really is just unknown yet for the coronavirus.
Okay.
Yeah, I would just say, you know, make sure that, you know, I know, I don't have to say this, but I feel like it for my own, I need to. Like, if there's something that you need from us, like, let us know sooner than later. We have our regularly scheduled meetings, but, because we want to make sure that we are on top of this, because it's a big deal, and, but keeping everything in context, of course. So as you sit here today, stand here today, there's nothing that you need from us.
No, if, if you look at the role of emergency management and public health preparedness, this is what we prepare for. This is what you have staff to prepare for, to think through these types of scenarios, and to provide preparation for the county. This is what we're here for, and we're going to continue to do our job, and part of that is just sharing information this morning. And as things change, they will, as things change, we'll, we'll be communicating.
It's better to be proactive than reactive, right?
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you.
Yeah.
You know, the reason I asked about the regular flu is, obviously, this is extremely serious, and you're, we need to take as aggressive a steps as we can as a nation, as a state, and a county, and whatever. That's a given. That's understood. But we can also do damage to ourselves by panicking and making this, I don't know even if want to say bigger than it is, but, because it could be big, I don't know. But, but the panic does damage to our economy, to, to everything. So I think it's good to put it in perspective that we have the flu every year, and it is a serious thing, lots of deaths, and this is, at this point, we have a handful in the entire country that have died from this.
And a big difference with the flu, though, is that we have vaccine, and about 40, somewhere between 40 and 48% or so have get the flu vaccine, I think, in this past year. And we have antivirals that are effective against the flu. Those do not exist right now for coronavirus, and they are a ways out. So that could have an impact on that.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Any other interested citizens, since we are still on that item? Otherwise, we are going to move to number five, our new employee welcome. We know there's a number. Come on up. Don't be shy. Just introduce yourself and what, what role you play with the county, and we will not bite.
I'll go first.
That was part of our, earlier part of our-
Yeah. Well, good morning, and I am Lo Pinheiro, and I work as the Drug-Free Communities Coordinator through the Public Health. And the Drug-Free Communities Grant is a grant that focuses on youth substance use prevention. We have three priorities here in Scott County that we're looking at, and opioid prevention, marijuana prevention, and underage drinking prevention. This is a grant that goes from ages 12 to 17, so that'll be our focus. And I'm really excited to be doing this work here. I've been working in the prevention field, it'll be, excuse me, 11 years in May, and a lot of that time was doing this specific grant as well in other counties in Wisconsin. And most recently, I oversaw five counties in North Carolina in the mountains that were doing drug-free communities work, as well as a technical assistance person with my experience from the grant. So really excited to be working here in substance use prevention, being proactive, like you said, and not reactive. So thank you, and I'm-
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Welcome.
Hi, my name is Kelly Wilkinson. I'm a therapist with the Mental Health Center through the Connect program, and I work at the Shakopee High School three days of the week, and then at the Takata Learning Center two days of the week. Prior to this, I was a therapist at Prairie Care and Edina, providing individual therapy for adolescents and adults.
Thank you very much. Welcome.
Good morning. My name is Becky Durco. I am in the Scott County Sheriff's Department as a 911 dispatcher. Prior to this, I was in the airline industry for 18 years as a concourse and concourse supervisor, operational supervisor. So I'm looking forward to helping the citizens of our county and fulfilling job.
Thank you very much. Welcome.
I'm Jessica Dalton. I'm in Housing Human Service Finance. I'll be doing the grant reporting, and I'm excited to be at Scott County.
Jessica, nice job.
My name is Ashlyn Vanoy. I am new to the 911 dispatch as well. I come from a family of emergency responders, so I felt that this was my part in, you know, adding to that, and I'm very excited. It's my first county job, so I really love this community. I'm from Dakota County, and I really love the community here and how everybody works together, so I am really excited to be part of this.
Thank you. Welcome.
Good morning. My name is Sarah Glockner. I'm a therapist in the Mental Health Center Connect program. I am down in Belle Plaine. I'm the therapist for the district down there. Prior to this, I was at Washburn Center for Children in Minneapolis, doing family therapy with kids and their parents. Glad to be here.
My name is Greg Sorensen. I'm with the Office of Management and Budget. I'm here as a technology advisor. I live in Shen Hassan, and I was here a few years back as a consultant, helping the county implement and kind of move forward their IT transformation. So happy to be back.
Welcome. Thank you.
Good morning. I'm Taylor Hanson. I'm a case aide with Adult Mental Health here in Scott County. Previously, I lived in South Dakota, so I've only been here for less than a year, and came from the child protection world, so glad to be in Minnesota. Thanks.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Stacy Siegel, and I'm the Principal Accounting Technician at the Public Works Department. Prior to this position, I worked 12 years at Spring Lake Township here in Scott County. I'm very excited to work here and continue to work in Scott County, as I love government accounting, because we work for the people. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Yeah, Commissioner Olwerk and I had the pleasure of meeting with them. It was a very creative and entertaining bunch. We thought maybe we'd see some strobe lights and smoke machines up there, but, but we were at least talking about it, so that's good. So welcome to all the new hires, the new hands and feet of the county, and welcome to the Scott County family. All right, we're going to move on to item six, which is, which is the consent agenda. These items will pass in one motion and have been vetted through the staff, so I will read through them. 6.1, accept the 2019 Federal Boating Safety Supplemental Equipment Grant Agreement with the state of Minnesota for the purchase of specific items related to recreational boating safety, and that will be upon us soon. 6.2, approve renewal of Joint Powers Agreement with the cities of Prairie Lake and Jordan for services provided by the Sentencing to Serve Service Program. Got that out. 6.3, approve a new tower lease agreement with Selco Partnership DBA Verizon Wireless. 6.4, adopt Resolution Number 2020-031, authorizing entering into a cooperative agreement with the city of Savage for cost participation for trail rehabilitation along County Highway 27 from County Highway 16 to South Park Drive. Welcome, Mayor. We have the mayor in our presence. Thank you. 6.5, adopt Resolution Number 2020-032, authorizing entering into a cooperative agreement with the city of Shakopee for cost participation for the County Highway 83 Modernization Project. 6.6, adopt Resolution Number 2020-034, authorizing entering into an agreement with Pictometry International for Oblique Aerial Imagery. 6.7, adopt Resolution Number 2020-036, authorizing a software agreement with OSP Insight Fiber Management Software and authorizing an amendment to the contract with Access Network, Inc., for the conversion of the fiber network from the Scott County GIS Fiber Portal to a hosted OSP Insight software solution. 6.8, authorizing, or authorize entering into a master use agreement with Jaguar Communications for the use of county fiber assets, and authorize the county administrator to sign amendments, addendums, and attachments to the master use agreement. 6.9, adopt Resolution Number 2020-038, supporting the Scott County Cultural Consortium Partnership Grant Application to the Minnesota State Historical Society. 6.10, approve the renewal application for a consumption and display permit for 2020 for Minnesota Harvest LLC located in St. Lawrence Township. 6.11, authorize staff to sign and cancel the permit bond for Knife River at the Schmitz Pit located at 6730 Old Highway 169 Boulevard, Jordan, Minnesota. 6.12, authorize staff to sign and cancel the permit bond for Ram Excavating located at 10046 225th Street West in Belle Plaine, Minnesota. And 6.13, approve payroll processing personnel actions. Those are the 13 items on our consent. Are there any items that we would like pulled? Yes.
Mr. Chairman, I don't want to pull any, but I'm prepared to move the consent items presented.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on our consent agenda? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Consent agenda is passed. Moving on to 7.1, we're going to receive an informational presentation on the state of Minnesota and Scott County preparations for the 2020 census. I see Mr. Davis approaching. I see Mr. Davis approaching.
Good morning, Commissioner, thank you for allowing us a little bit of time on your agenda to hear about some important information on the upcoming twenty twenty census. The big count is coming up on April first. State Demographer Susan Brower is here to share what is at stake for Minnesota when it comes to the twenty twenty census. And after Susan's presentation, I'll come back to the podium and provide you just a brief overview of some of the activities that we're doing locally with the Scott County Complete Count Committee. We've done a lot of different activities, and I just want to spotlight them for you here this morning. Susan Brower has been the state demographer since twenty twelve. In that capacity, she travels the state, talking with Minnesotans about the new social and economic realities that are brought about by recent demographic shifts. I know in recent months, the real focus for Susan has been talking about the twenty twenty census. Susan joined the State Demographic Center after working as a researcher on the Minnesota Compass Project at Wilder Research in Saint Paul. Prior to that, she worked at the Population Studies Center at the University of Michigan. Please welcome Susan Brower.
Welcome.
Thank you. What my bio doesn't say is I'm also a mom of a couple of snarky teenagers, so I am, in my other life, I'm driving all the time. I'm here to talk to you about the census today, where we're at in Minnesota, what's at stake, and what communities can do to support a complete count, why it's important. Generally, we can see that Scott County population growth has continued through this decade. It's moderated just a bit, is the estimate for the current decade relative to the last decade, but you can see that there are a lot of people who have been estimated to have been added since the last census, and we want to make sure that all of Scott County's residents are accounted in this next round. It means more political representation for the area, it means more in terms of funding, federal and state funding, and I'll go into some of the details there in a moment. Just kind of looking at the most recent population estimates, the growth has been concentrated primarily in Savage, Shakopee, and Pryor Lake, but you can see that there has been growth across the board for almost all cities, all townships in the whole county. So, the census is going to be mailed out to homes beginning in about nine days, the first notice, so it's coming up quickly. Most people, their first experience will be to receive a letter in their mailbox that invites them to go online to respond to the census. This is the first time that we're able to go online and do this. In the past, it's always been paper and pencil. What will happen, if residents do not respond, they'll get a reminder letter, and then another reminder letter after that. April first is actually Census Day, so that's the day that you're answering to and around, and that's when you'll really hear about the census. But by that time, residents should have received somewhere between one and three mailings, asking them to go online to fill out the form. There'll be more reminder letters after April first, and if people don't respond online by April eighth to the sixteenth, they'll actually get a paper form in the mail. So everyone has the option to respond by paper. If they choose not to go online, or they don't like to go online, that's fine, eventually they'll get that paper form. So they can sit tight and wait for that if their preference is not to go online. There's a final reminder letter that will go out in late April. It will say, "It's not too late, you can still do this, please do." And then it's in the end of April, early May, where enumerators start going to doors and knocking door by door on households that have not responded. So that's the process. There's a couple of months here where there'll be lots of mailings, we'll really be pushing people to go online to the extent that it's possible. There's also a phone number if people prefer to respond that way, but the push right here is to get as many people responding to the census in the next two months, so that enumerators don't have to go door to door. It costs more, and people tend not to like people knocking on their doors, so... This is going to be a really tough census to take. It's always tough to take a census, there's always a lot of things that you need to plan for and consider in counting every single human being in the whole US. But this time in particular is going to be tough, and it has somewhat to do with the context where we are today. So in part, we've seen declining response rates over the decade and into this decade, where people just aren't excited to fill out a government form, go figure. They're over-surveyed, I get it. So part of what we're working to do is to kind of cut through some of the noise of all the surveys, to say, "If you're only going to fill out one survey, this is one that's really, really foundational and really important." We've seen ongoing kind of growth in the distrust in government over time and into this decade as well, and I think that's going to be a real challenge, not just for groups who are fearful of the government, but just a general kind of apathy and sense that, you know, it's not something that they need to partake in. So I think those are some of the things that I'm most worried about with this census, is just getting people to respond, because those kind of contexts are out there. It's really complicated to take a census, because people move around a lot, they're in complex kinds of living arrangements, particularly if you think about college students, if you think about people who are homeless or low-income, moving a lot. These are all folks who tend to be harder to count, and it is important that we reach absolutely everyone. So, the census is used for all kinds of things. We don't usually think about this until it comes to about twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, the year's ending in nine, or in zero, but we're here now, so I want to just review kind of why it's so important that we get a good count this time around. The census is in the Constitution, and it is set forth so that we can make sure that we have equal representation. We don't have any other way of making sure that our political districts are equal and fair without doing a count every ten years. We've got estimates, but they're not the same thing, they're not as accurate as counting everyone. So whatever happens with this next count, it will be built into our political, into our maps, and into our representation for the next ten years. The same is true of resources, of funding, and I'll walk you through that a little bit. And then we all use these data to make smart decisions in terms of planning businesses, where they're going to locate, at the state level for funding disbursements. So there's all kinds of reasons to have a good count. In terms of political representation, one of the things that is important for Minnesota is retaining all eight of our congressional districts. And this is a map after the twenty-ten census, and the gray states that are shown here are the states that retain the number of seats that they had after the two thousand census. Minnesota held on to its eighth congressional district by just eight thousand people. It was the very last state to receive a district, and we're right back in that same position again today. It's going to be very, very close as to whether we're going to be able to keep that district. The number was just eighty-seven hundred people last time, right now, it's between about, the estimate is that we will lose a seat between about seven thousand to twenty thousand people. So it's very much within our capacity to make that up with a good count. Minnesota has been good at counting, at responding to the census in the past. We were second to only, only to Wisconsin last time. We will beat Wisconsin this time. At least, we're working on it. But we generally do have a very good response to things like voting, other civic activities like the census. We expect that that will be the case, but there are also these contexts that I think will make the count more difficult than it was last time. It's not that we're not growing. Indeed, Minnesota grows very well for a Midwestern state. You can see relative to other Midwestern states here, that we grew about on average as the US, but it's just that the south in the US and the western states are growing so rapidly, that that apportionment will shift political representation to the areas where the population growth has been stronger. Just to give you a sense of that scale, in the past nine years, we estimate that Minnesota has added about three hundred thirty-six thousand residents, but if you look at some of the larger states, they've grown upwards of two million. Again, we do better than our northwestern, our northeastern neighbors and our Midwestern states who surround us. You can see that Illinois lost a hundred and fifty-nine thousand people, an estimate from the last nine years, so we really are doing very well, we're just not keeping up the level of growth. And when we kind of roll all of our numbers across all the states into these projections, it looks very, very close about whether we'll be able to hold on to that seat. I mentioned the number, seven to twenty-two thousand, that's what we're looking at. I will say then, with respect to state-level redistricting, county districts, school districts, all across, well, I guess school districts stay the same, some of the city districts are based on population, they will need to adjust due to the growth that has happened this year after the next census. What we have for estimates is that there's been a tremendous amount of growth in Minneapolis and Saint Paul. They've led the state in terms of growth, and it's been a very long time since that's been the case. Minneapolis and Saint Paul both lost population between two thousand and twenty-ten, so this is a considerable turnaround, and our political maps at the state level will need to adjust to account for this growth as well. You can see that Savage and Shakopee make this list as well, for areas within Scott County, communities within Scott County. It's just important that you get everyone counted, to make sure that you hold on to the representation that you should have. It's a matter of fairness across the board. We don't want to see maps drawn based on poor data, and so that's really, in terms of the political redistricting, what I'm after. The state also receives all kinds of funds on the basis of the census. George Washington University has done a study specifically state by state, and Minnesota's number is fifteen billion dollars that we receive from the federal government, based on the census count. That's an annual number, it works out to about twenty-seven hundred dollars per person per year, or about twenty-seven thousand over the course of the decade. So it's a tremendous amount of money that's distributed on the basis of this count, and that's just at the federal level. You shouldn't be able to read this, but I just wanted to give you a sense of the types of programs that go into that fifteen billion dollar number. These are tax dollars that we are, as Minnesotans, sending off to Washington, and the census is one of the ways that we get them back, is through this count. So we've got this one chance, this one opportunity to get a good count, and then those numbers will stay with us for the funding formulas for the next ten years. So this little window here in the next couple of months to make sure that the count is a good one. One of the things that's been particularly challenging for the Census Bureau this time around has been hiring enough workers. Scott County is in relatively good shape, but is still looking for more workers. When I just checked the numbers earlier this week, it's met ninety-one percent of its applicant goal. The pay is twenty-two dollars an hour, just pretty good. But you, and the minimum is five hours a week, so we're encouraging folks who are, you can't do it if you're an elected official, but otherwise, if you are a county employee, a city employee, you know, generally, if you already have a job and want to make some extra money, this is a good way to do this. It was, the jobs application period was supposed to have closed by the end of February, but it has been extended for a couple weeks, because they've been having a hard time getting folks to do it. This was not an issue in twenty-ten, we were coming off of a recession, they just opened up their applications, and boom, it was done. This time, we've spent a lot of time and energy asking, begging people to take on these jobs as a civic kind of engagement type of opportunity, in addition to making some money on the side.
I see it on the slide, but I just want to reiterate, twenty-two dollars per hour.
That's right, twenty-two dollars per hour. I've given a few media interviews where, mid-interview, when I talk about what the rate is, the reporter almost drops the camera to go apply. It's a pretty good rate. And here's where you can apply. I really do think that it is important for the quality of the count as well, I mean, we'd like to see these jobs staffed. It's important to get this work done come, you know, the end of April, that there are enough people to do the door knocking, but you're going to get a better count if you have people who are from your community doing the counting. Culturally, a better match, people who know the neighborhood. The idea is that you get people who are from the same community doing the count in their community, because they do a better job. They speak the same language and understand kind of the same things. Historically, the census has missed some groups more than others, including young children, children under the age of five are one of the groups that was missed in twenty, at a higher rate, was missed in twenty-ten. People of color, people with language barriers, native or indigenous people, low-income households, renters, there's really, there's a lot of literature that points specifically to groups that are, have been historically undercounted in the past. And so we're encouraging communities to focus on where they have connections with these groups, whether it's through a program, whether it's through a specific community tie, or a community, an individual in the community, and make sure that that message, that this is an important thing to do, gets out through a trusted messenger. The Census Bureau estimates that about twenty-two thousand Scott County residents will not self-respond to the census, so this is, this is not the number that will be missed ultimately, but the number that they will likely need to go knocking on doors for. When they go to knock on doors, rather than receiving a self-response, the quality of the data can be reduced. If they can't get ahold of people, they may need to go to a proxy responder, someone like a mail carrier, or a neighbor, and that data is never as accurate as if someone's responding themselves. So there is the need here in Scott County to get the word out in advance of this census count going out. I think I mentioned earlier that apathy and fear are among the, kind of the largest barriers to people completing out their, completing their form in twenty-twenty. There is a map that the Census Bureau has put online to show kind of exactly where there might be harder to count areas, and you can see the darkest areas, I'm zeroed in here on Scott County, that you can see that some census tracts within the area, particularly in the northern part of the county, have thirty up to fifty percent expectation that they will need follow-up after, after the period ends. So, we've put together a bunch of resources at my office at the state. We're a small office, we've got three full-time people working on the census, so we have a limited ability to do outreach, but we've tried to put together resources that we think people can take and use in their own communities. So whether it is print materials, videos, some apps that help people kind of answer questions about the census, we've put these things all on our site and encourage community groups and community partners to use these resources to talk to people about the census. One of the things that we've put out there is something called a Help Desk. You can, you can text your questions about the census to six six twenty twenty, or it's also on our twenty-twenty website. It's just one way to kind of boost the ability of people to talk about the census. I've found when I'm kind of training people to talk about it, they're anxious to talk about it, because there's kind of a lot to know, a lot of, particularly with residency rules, they don't need to know all that to be able to talk about the census, they can use kind of some of these tools to make sure that they can get people's questions answered. So we've got a bunch of materials on the site, as I mentioned, I'd encourage you to check that out, and then I'm happy to take any, any questions you might have.
Thank you.
We were going to talk about what was happening in Scott County as well.
I do have a question. Susan, how long is it before the individual information becomes available to use? I mean, it's quite a while, isn't it?
It sure is. It is seventy-two years, and that is based on the average life expectancy at the time that the law was written. So the idea is that the data are protected by law, by the federal code, for seventy-two years at the individual level after they're collected. After that seventy-two years passes, that's when you... collected. After that seventy-two years passes, that's when you start seeing kind of the information that you see when people are studying ancestry, for example.
Yeah, that'd be me. So we don't even have the nineteen-fifty census public to people then yet.
Right now, we have nineteen-forty, and these, the data that will be collected next month will be released in twenty-ninety-two. So that is a number that hurts, a date that hurts my head.
Good, good question. That's interesting. Any other questions?
I would, I had one question. Could you go back to that screen where it had the, the fifteen billion that we're getting back based on, and I get the whole idea of anti-government sentiment, which you'd mentioned, it's kind of been going on for a while, right? It's nothing new. It seems like it's, and I, I, like, I don't mind filling out the census, but it's not like first on my list, but like, I don't avoid it. But this is a big deal. Because Minnesota, traditionally, if I understand this right, we export way more tax dollars than we import back. So this is a way to keep some of our money home. We can maybe agree or disagree with, you know, that whole system and where it's being spent, but I'd rather have my money coming back than, than going elsewhere, but maybe that's just me. So I just think that's a, a little bit of a encouragement to fill it out, get it done.
I think so. And I think some of the programs on here are programs that we all use, roads, bridges, that federal funding is based on a census count. Some of the, some of those programs are based on a census count. Some of the funding for our local schools are based on, on census count, like the special education funds. So there's a lot that comes very, kind of even more, more local than just at the state level, just directly to the community based on that count.
Thank you.
I'll just wrap up here quickly. Back in, I think, early twenty-nineteen, our scale partner, Scott County Association for Leadership and Efficiency, decided instead of each city and township having their own complete count committee, we would establish one county-wide complete count committee. And we've done that, and we have great representation from some of our local governments, our schools, our nonprofits, our churches, our businesses, have come together and met quarterly to talk about how we can mobilize more local, direct kind of personal outreach to, to different groups about the importance of the census. The map. So one of the areas that this committee is really focused on is that these neighborhoods in dark green, kind of the downtown area of Savage, the downtown area of Shakopee, a little bit of Louisville Township, we've really focused on getting to gathering places, churches, larger residential development, housing developments in these areas, and bringing material to them, talking to some of the, whether it's a church leader, or someone in, in those housing developments that we can reach and try to get information out to the, the tenants. We've printed out a lot of material that we can disperse to a lot of the, the different tenants, just talking about the importance of the census. Other activities, we've prepared a lot of articles. We've been fortunate enough to land on the front page of The Scene the last couple of editions, trying to get the information out of how important it is to take the census, letting everyone know that this year, everyone in our county will be getting an invitation to do it online, and, and providing them with that information, also letting them know that our libraries, our local libraries, are going to be a great resource for people that maybe don't have the technology to complete it online. They're going to be invited to come to, to a library. The libraries have established kind of a formal, they've called themselves a questionnaire access center. So our librarians have actually done some training on how to complete the census, so that when residents come in, they can quickly assist them and, and get them able to complete the census. We've also staffed some events. Last fall, we were at the Project Community Connect over at Canterbury, just having a table, talking about the importance of the census. We thought that was a good group to kind of get in front of and remind them. The Shakopee Immigrant Health Summit was held late last year, and a couple of our complete count committee members staffed a booth there. We're just getting word that the Shakopee Diversity Alliance would like to hold an event coming up on April first, and so we're starting to coordinate with them. And so those are some different ways that we've kind of had some direct engagement with different community groups. I think I'll wrap it up there and ask for any final questions that you might have on the effort so far.
I think that wraps it up. Thank you so much.
All right, thank you.
Fill out your census, everybody.
Yeah.
Talking to myself, too. All right, thank you very much for that. Now, we're going to move on to eight point one and receive information on the Scott County Mental Health Local Advisory Council. Has it been one year already? I count and seen this guy every, that I know we're in a new.
He just has that friendly face.
Exactly, yes. Very conversational, very, all right, Barb, take it away.
So, Mr. Chair, Commissioners, good morning, and the next item is, item is to receive information regarding our Scott County Mental Health Local Advisory Council. The Comprehensive Mental Health Act of nineteen-eighty-seven and the Children's Mental Health Act of nineteen-eighty-nine require counties to establish a local advisory council. We can choose to run them separately or together, and we choose to have a combined effort. The purpose of the LAC is to ensure that we access the knowledge of our citizens in the community that have an interest in our local mental health system, in either finding ways to influence enhancements, or to look at how we can influence public, public policy. One of the, I guess, requirements within the LAC is that they come and they report to you, provide an update, and give recommendations to the board. If you'll notice, there is a handout that was given to all of you, and on the back of that, you will see that we have our members. We have both voting members and non-voting members, and the voting members have all been appointed by you. And you will notice that there's only one individual on there that's actually a county employee, and that's Sheriff Henin. Other than that, these are community members. They are mental health professionals. They are individuals that maybe have had a lived experience, or have connections with a loved one that has had a lived experience. And they're really clearly represented across our commissioner districts, from a variety of communities across Scott County. When you look at our strategic plan for twenty-twenty to twenty-twenty-five, we have a strategy around community engagement and participation. And really, this is a key group that can help play into that and help guide our work as we move forward. So with that, I know we've got our vice chair with Janet Williams and John Sadler, our chair here, and they've been great at leading the charge of a very committed group. In fact, we meet monthly, and it is a packed house. So with that, I will turn it over to John, and he will give you an update on, on what the group has been up to.
Great, thank you very much. Welcome back.
Well, thank you very much. It's, I'm glad to be back. Barb did a phenomenal job of doing the introductions, so I'll pass on the purpose, but it is important to note that we are appointed by you. And so as a result, we are focused on looking at the mental health needs in our county and helping convey that message back to you as, as we go forward as a board. So what I'd like to do is a year, two thousand and nineteen review, and it was a very action-packed year. I mean, we, we saw a lot of things happen that are very significant in, in the field of mental health and good progress. The, some of the areas that we focused on in terms of our advice was education. You know, education is very substantial in helping remove the stigma associated with mental health, making it more commonplace and understanding with people, so that there's acceptance and understanding. And I'm going to highlight two things on the educational side, and you can see that there's, there's a number of them here that are listed, which are pretty substantial. But I'd like to note, one, or actually, two, November sixteenth, or number six, November sixth, rather, two thousand and nineteen, Creating Faith Communities presented to St. John's Lutheran Church in Shakopee. There were thirty-nine attendees, and thirty-nine attendees is actually substantial. I mean, normally, you see five, ten, whatever. Thirty-nine is, is quite influential. The other thing that's very important to point out, and Mayor Williams and others have made major contributions in this area, is that over five hundred brochures have been handed out. Now, these brochures talk about what is mental health, and the services available, and who the resources are that you can go to. And if you can imagine handing out five hundred of these brochures to people in need, to churches, to clinics, libraries, police departments, courthouse, and events. So those make substantial influences in, in understanding of what services are available to people. One of the hallmark items that was accomplished in two thousand and nineteen and is ongoing is the Intensive Residential Treatment Center in Savage. As you know, mental health services are needed across the board. And so, an array of services that target the right type of intervention for the needs necessary. One strategy, either is to prevent hospitalization, or provide a place to go when someone leaves the hospital, is to have a short-term residential stabilization, or a long-term residential treatment service. It's very hard for somebody to go from a crisis in a hospital setting to being reintegrated into society. The ERTS Center, Intensive Residential Treatment Centers, provide that bridge. That gives the individual the chance and the opportunity to make the transition back into community as, as a citizen. It's important to note that the Residential Treatment Center started September sixteenth, and will be open this year. That's a very fast-paced progression in, in the building of the, of the, the building. The achievement highlights is important for listening to community needs and the development of partnerships. The ERTS building is made possible through the state bonding, allocating one-point-nine million dollars, an additional two-point-two-six million grant from the Department of Human Services to support capital costs associated with the building. In addition, the achievement is due to the successful collaboration, and I cannot overemphasize the, the collaboration that took place to make this happen. And the contributions of local partners, Scott County, Dakota County, the city of Savage, who provided the land, Scott County Community Development Authority, and the Guild Incorporated, who will be providing the onsite services and delivery after the facility opens this year. So the ERTS is a major achievement. The ERTS is something that was talked about at great length with the, with the committee of the LAC for many years, and we've presented that to you a number of times, and we can't thank you enough for your support in helping us making this happen, because it's, it's going to make a difference in many lives. While it's sixteen beds, the reality is it's sixteen beds, sixteen people, rotating through over the years, thousands, tens of thousands of people will be served. That is very substantial. The Crisis Center is, the Crisis Response Team is a, is a very important one that's come about. Over the years, the LAC has recommended a crisis team dedicated to Scott County versus a shared model. We used to have a shared model. And in two thousand and eighteen, Scott awarded a contract to Canvas Health to provide those services. Canvas Health has been in place for almost two years, and has formed working partnerships with the police department, Scott County, Scott County Sheriff's Department, where they reside in. So they reside in across the street. There are a number of significant achievements that they have had, but there's two that we'd like to bring to a point. I think it really drives home the message of what it means to have a dedicated service. In two thousand and nineteen, they took two thousand five hundred and thirty-nine calls. In two thousand and sixteen, that was seven hundred and eighty-two. That's a substantial increase over a very, very short period of time. Of the two thousand and five hundred and thirty-nine calls, two hundred and thirty-two were face-to-face assessments. That is extremely critical, because you now have a professional working with the individual in need, partnering with, with the departments, whether it be Health and Services, or the Sheriff's Department, the police, and making assessment of what the individual needs, and, and then bringing about those, those needs to the individual in a timely manner. Rather than incarceration, or hospitalization, or something, it might actually be something different. Through their assessment, they're able to help make the right choices for that individual. They've also worked closely with our, our sheriff in the Scott County Jail, and doing in-house assessments, and making appropriate recommendations. So there's always a call to action, right? And I think that it's important to understand that we want to continue to do education. We want to see education be a continued effort, and, and as you can see, that's been on our agenda, will continue to be on our agenda. To support the increase in education through the mental health, to remove the stigma, that's really the important emphasis there. Mental health resources, support opportunities for programs that promote the growth and development of services for those living with mental health illnesses, and allow them to be valued members of society. That's very important. That's where the stigma gets removed. They can be successful members of society, no matter how they are and wherever they are in their recovery process. Important areas of need that the LAC continues to hear about include children, and adult mental health, ensuring stability for the county's crisis team. Children are a strong emphasis. Early intervention provides the greatest opportunity for recovery, and greatest opportunity for longevity and, and good mental health. And lastly, we're really focused on, on housing in two thousand and twenty. The LAC continues to focus on housing for the homeless. As we know, there's a high correlation between mental health and housing instability. By that, I mean, if an individual does not have a stable home to live in, they live in their car, they live with family, they live with friends, their children, don't have a place where they can go on a consistent basis and have a stable environment. That just continues to perpetuate the, the, the effects of mental illness. So it's about providing families with stability, which leads to independence, and less, and most importantly, reliance on Scott County. There is a truth by, by fact that we, while we have homelessness, we are in fact incurring costs associated with that. So by helping individuals achieve a stable housing, we're relieving the county from some of the expenses, and providing the people with a greater service. Due to this, we request that the county board support our continued efforts to decrease homelessness and, and increase affordable housing options in our community. And as I said, this will be an emphasis in twenty-twenty for the LAC to continue. So next year, when we come back, hopefully, we'll have new information to share about homelessness and recommendations. Any questions I can answer?
I have a comment. It's an idea, actually. I thought of this during a meeting, you know, maybe six months ago, and I, and the question is, have you ever considered a sponsoring a mental health conference, like a day-long conference? And when I say that, I don't mean that you guys would take it on entirely. I would think, you know, I just tried to brainstorm, you know, who could be partners that would come alongside you if you were to be the lead on it. I mean, you'd have FISH, you'd have the faith community, you'd have Guild, you'd probably, you know, Scale, and cities, and nonprofits, and the CDA, and the county. I think if you had a, a day-long conference, say, with, you know, a lead speaker, you know, sessions, and then breakout sessions on topics like depression, or suicide, or addiction, or homelessness, or whatever you would feel appropriate, I think that we would really benefit as a community. And I think there'd be a lot of energy, a lot of interest in that. So I want to ask that question, and also suggest, you know, that we consider doing that.
Yeah, we have considered it, and, and that's a great suggestion, and I love your thought about bringing great energy to the table. I think when you bring people from varying backgrounds and varying understandings, you bring about a greater common knowledge base that we can work from. So let me go back to the committee and talk about that, and see what, what possibilities we can come up with. But thank you very much. It's a great idea. Any other questions? There's one last thing I'd like to do.
I just wanted to say that we have, have, in the past two years, NAMI has done a mini event that's been called Super Saturday. It's on two Saturdays, it's been on Saturdays in Prior, at the Prior Lake High School, and that's been an event where we have had speakers and booths, and that would be an event that we could probably we could probably expand on, so that's a good idea.
Great.
Thank you.
Yeah, I would just say, this isn't necessarily a question, but on your last point, homelessness is going to be a primary focus in 2020. I can't wait. I'm hoping you guys have the answer to how to increase affordable housing options because groups, there's groups out there, organized groups, unorganized groups pointing, it's hey, it's you, it's me, it's you.
Yep.
I can't wait.
Yep. I couldn't agree with you more, and I hear it personally from my neighbors and others, so it's definitely a hot topic.
It is, it is. So I'll be all ears to hear what you guys come up with.
Excellent.
You're going to have the keys to the kingdom, the answers. I can't, I can't wait.
We're going to try.
Thank you.
We're going to try.
Thank you very much.
There's one last side of that I'd like to do that I do annually, and that is to actually ask the LAC members to stand up to be recognized. Yes, voting and non-voting members, please. As you can see, these are individuals who have made the contribution that came today. As you saw from the list that Barb talked about, our group has grown probably 40% over the last five years, and with that knowledge base, we're able to make better and better recommendations. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate it. All right, we're going to, I think, table 8.2 until our friends from mosquito control make it across the river. I think they're trying to keep the larva at bay up that way. Is that the deal? Looking at you since you're on that committee. So why don't we jump ahead, if that's okay, to number nine, committee reports and commissioner updates. And I'd just like to mention, I should have mentioned this at the outset, but we're flying in missing woman formation here with Commissioner Weckman-Brecke is at the NAOCO Conference representing us and doing the good work of the county, and I should have said that earlier, so thank you for doing that good work. Now, Commissioner Wolf.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On the 18th, we had a tour of the affordable housing. We saw a number of different units and all very nice and something to emulate on that for affordable housing here in Scott County. Also, on the 18th, Northern Natural Gas is putting in a bigger pump, pipeline. They have a lot of demand out in the Credit River, Lakeville area, so that went very well. Met with Andrew Stevens. He works for Alina. He's the, with the ambulance, and he had a few ideas on things going forward. On the 20th, the Jordan Interchange at 169 and 282, they had a little session there just to see what's going on there. No money yet, but they're working on it. The 24th, the WMO. The 25th, attended my caucus. On the 26th, Metropolitan Mosquito Control. We'll hear a little bit about that later. The 26th, 27th, AMC. On the 27th, Vermillion River Joint Powers. Everything's nice and quiet there. Also, that night, I was out at Alco New Market for their monthly meeting. After that, was out at, in Savage for the, they had Second Amendment group that got together. Very nice gathering about, I don't know, what do you think, Mike, 50 or so people there?
50, yeah.
Very civil, everyone very reasonable, just, you know, just looking for some answers on what they can do to help that along. On the 28th, met with the administrator for my monthly meeting. 29th, helped judge the Pinewood Derby over at, yeah, I know. I look at some of those, there's some new, nice new designs out there on how to make a little Pinewood Derby car. Met with Dan Hall after that. Talked about a few things that are coming down the pipe here. On the second, last night, Prior Lake had their, City Council had a workshop I was at. They were talking about fees on the utilities and that if they increased them, some of them from 18 to 54 bucks, it would collect a lot, a lot of money they could spend on other things. And I don't know if that's how they want to do taxes, but it hits the poorer people disproportionately because a guy in a small house would pay 54 bucks, a guy in a big house pays, so I don't, see what happens there. Credit River, and I should say that most of the council was not in favor of that, not all. And then Credit River had their monthly meeting, and then Cedar Lake had their monthly meeting. And I was at, I voted, well, I didn't vote this morning, I just signed up and actually voted present, so that is my report.
Thank you very much. Moving down to the left, Commissioner Beard.
Well, I thank you, Mr. Chairman. On the, as mentioned, on the 18th, the Beacon Housing Tour, hearing their perspective on how we address homelessness for chronically difficult people to house. On the 20th, had lunch with our Met Council Rep, Deb Barber, with others. On the 21st, the AMC Board Meeting in St. Paul, where we're taking up an initiative called Bridging the Divide, working on not only just necessarily civility and discussion, but how to disagree agreeably is a topic that the counties are pretty concerned about. And among the other topics we talked about were the Second Amendment Defenders. We had that presentation this morning, and it is a statewide movement, so we talked a little about that as well. The 25th, the Intergovernmental Working Group Meeting at the Shakopee and Waukegan Community. Also attended the CAP Finance Committee. I'm on that committee. Talked about how things are going with the CAP Agency. I got to tell you, this new CFO we have is just, if we could call her rocket scientist and you would take that as a compliment, she is a rocket scientist when it comes to hiring good staff and keeping everything on the up and up with our filings and all the things that are responsible when you're taking federal and state grants. The paperwork is enormous. That evening, also attended the precinct caucuses. I think somehow my picture got in the focal paper out of that deal. Sorry about that. On the 26th and 27th, attended the AMC Legislative Conference in St. Paul. On the 26th, had the privilege of meeting with several of my former colleagues and some of the new folks. Representative Tabke, we visited his office. We got to see Representative Albright, Representative Vogel, Hunter Cantrell. Representative Cantrell was not available to us that day. I think, in fact, I think he was out ill. Then we went over to the Senate, met with Senator Dreheim, Senator Pratt, Senator Hall, and talked about the AMC legislative initiatives, which particularly the ones that align with our Scott County initiatives. We were able to talk about those things. And of course, that conference wrapped up on the 27th. That evening, I also, as Commissioner Wolf, attended the get-together with the Second Amendment Defenders down at the Savage VFW. I seem to recollect it just a little differently than Commissioner Wolf. There were probably 50 or 60 people there. I would say all but two of them were very well behaved and made it a very good job of stating their concerns and asking good questions, and I'm looking forward to having that discussion here. On the, yesterday, I had lunch with a couple of my mid-level friends just to kind of keep tabs on how things are going and remind them that I used to be their friend and I'm now Scott County Commissioner, so remember that we're out here. And so I'm always glad to keep those relationships open on your behalf. And then I had my monthly meeting with the county administrator. That's my report, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Aldrich.
On the 18th, I attended the Beacon Facilities Tour as well. On the 19th, the Suburban Transit Association had their sort of legislative day at the Capitol. We had about 10 legislators come in here, the priorities of the Suburban Transit Association, and that was very well attended for us for that kind of meeting. Later that same day, the Transportation Advisory Board, and yet later that day was the Minnesota Valley Transit Authority Driver of the Year Dinner, where we recognized the drivers and the work of Schmied and Sons, and it was a great event held at the Orson Hunt Club. On the 20th, the Greater MSP interviews that I had been doing, I did my last interview with Bill Reynolds and wrapped up that process, and it was very, very informative to me in terms of what are some barriers towards economic development. I did learn through the process, not from these interviews, but that one item that is surprisingly a big barrier or a problem for site selectors or companies that want to locate in a community is they first want to poke around and get some feedback and stuff, and they don't want it to be known that they're looking in a community. And so they ask the community to sign a nondisclosure agreement that they can sort of look confidentially and not, you know, publicize that, you know, the company's looking. Well, a lot of communities don't want to sign that. Cities don't want to sign it, counties don't want to sign it, and I think we need to look at that, you know, how are we bound or not bound by that idea of a confidentiality agreement? Do we have the ability to, in the early stages of a company looking, to just sign that and have? So I want to learn more about that so that we don't put up barriers that turn away a project. And I heard examples of where one community didn't want to sign that, so the company just said, okay, we're going to go somewhere, look somewhere else, and they did. And so that's a problem and a question, but we, obviously as government, we want to be transparent with the public, but we also want to bring jobs to the community, so it's kind of a balance, you know? How do we, how do we deal with that? So question to think about, discuss. Later that day on the 20th, I had the lunch with Deb Barber and talked about different projects or different things that we're looking at in Scott County in the future, and it was a good time. It was, I guess it was tilted towards just building relationship and friendship and looking at some things coming up in the future, and so it was a good time. The 24th, Scale Service Delivery. And that night, also the Scale Unified Transit Management Plan. And the 25th, the Fish Faith Breakfast they had at Hope Lutheran in Jordan was a really good meeting. It was basically on families and children in crisis and sort of our net, our safety net to deal with families in crisis. It was a great meeting. And then the 26th, the first meeting of that Greater MSP Task Force that I'm on that is looking at barriers or things that can advance our region in terms of bringing more jobs into our community. We want to be top five in job growth in the nation, and I think it's by 2040. I'm not sure if I've got that right. It could be 2030, but in the next period of time, we want to go from where we are to top five. That's the goal. And so we're looking at everything that would be a help and a hindrance to that goal. That's the end of my report.
Thank you very much. I'm going to try not to duplicate, but my first one, I'm going to start out with duplication is on the, I, too, was at the Fish Faith Breakfast. Don't tell Commissioner Beard about the bacon that was there. It was piled high and it was really good.
You know what? The bacon was even better at the Suburban Transit.
Is that right?
We knew Tony Albright was coming, so we had.
See, that's the, that's the trick is bacon. But I just wanted to mention it because it was a great meeting of public, private, nonprofits coming together to try to be the hands and feet and making sure everyone was aware of what other people were doing and trying to move the needle on items. So the bacon was awesome. That was just a icing on the cake, but bringing people together that are trying to serve a common good was really heartwarming, to say the least, and there's action behind it. It's not just an emotional feel-good, there's action behind it. And then we had the Chair Vice Chair, so thank you for moving that so we could make that Fish Faith Breakfast. IWG, also that same day, the new Vice Chair joined us, so it was good to at least meet him for the first time for myself, and Shakopee had some of their consultants in talking about that cultural corridor. You drive by Memorial Park, at least for me, and a lot of beautiful oak trees, great place along the river, but they see some of the maps of the ground penetrating radar, and they also had a map of LiDAR showing all the depressions and mounds in the area. It was eye-opening because obviously you don't see it with the naked eye. So that was a great presentation, but it was good to meet the new Vice Chair as well. And then I'm just going to mention our new employee earlier this morning, it was an energetic group of folks, and I'm looking at you guys. So welcome to Scott County once again, the new hands and feet. Do good work, I know you will. That is what I'll mention for my report, and I think we do have, well, should we finish our reports or we want to go to? Let's do that. I'm looking to my left. Let's finish that process.
Mr. Chairman, just a couple of quick things. Yesterday, we submitted two letters down to the legislature, one for the McMahon Lake, supporting their hearing this morning in the Natural and Environment Committee for funding for that project to help with the lake levels there. And then the second one went to Senator Gazilka's and on behalf of the Community Corrections Act, and talking about the funding that you made a priority in that area for the community corrections. The other thing is Commissioner Brecky is meeting today with Representative Craig Hagador and Senator Smith in Klobuchar with Dan McNamara out in Washington, DC today to talk about 169 and Trunk Highway 13, which were the two high priorities that we were providing updates on. And then finally, the Advisory Committee meeting, our joint meeting of all our advisory committees, is in two weeks from tonight. It's March 17th at 6:00, and really hopeful that most of those folks will attend again and provide some input on some of the things that we're working on. So that is the end.
Great. Thank you. Looking down to my right, County Attorney, any reason to?
We do not need to.
Nice. Thank you very much. All right, we're going to circle back to 8.2 and receive our annual presentation from the Metropolitan Mosquito Control District. We're trying to usher you in here with a little bit of...
All right.
And they are just flinging the room here now, too, as we buzz.
Alex, see if you can get a copy of that. That's better than the sound for Big Dog.
What do you got for us today? Can't wait.
Mr. Chair, I'm Steve Manwiler. I'm the Director of the District. Before I go through a very brief update, I'd like to make two introductions. First, we had a big retirement last year. Our Public Affairs Coordinator of 23 years retired last September. We were able to hire his replacement in July, and so they were able to spend two months together, so Alex Carlson now is our Public Affairs Coordinator. So Alex will be the voice of the district. Mike McLean was beforehand. When Mike was hired, he was hired three weeks before I was hired. There was no such thing as social media. The internet, yes, it was there, but it was nowhere near as developed as it is now. Alex brings to us a lot of experience with how to use all of these different electronic communication modes to get our message out, which is, that's not the only reason we hired him, but that was a major reason we hired him. I'd also like to introduce John Peterson. John Peterson manages the facility that delivers service to Scott County. So John's kind enough to come along to these meetings. One, you need to see the people who are really the boots on the ground in your county, and two, you may have some questions, some specific questions, the answers to which John will know, so we always go ahead and bring him. Without further ado...
Do we have John's cell phone number?
Actually, it might be easier to get the main office number because they can track him. He's at a lot of meetings at our headquarters. You'll get him faster that way. I'm briefly going to review the governance of the district, our 2020 levy and budget, then get into mosquito biology, and again, it's a brief review. If you understand the biology, the control program's a lot easier to understand. We are a disease prevention organization, so I'll briefly review three mosquito-borne diseases active in Minnesota, and that'll help you understand pieces of our control program as well. Finally, we've got a new addition to this presentation, which is something that Alex went through and freshened up all my presentations. I'm going to get really spoiled really fast, but he added a summary of services delivered to Scott County, and finally, some plans we have for the upcoming year. The district was created in 1958. We're governed by 18 county commissioners who come from the seven counties that comprise the district. Service area is about 2,900 square miles. We serve about 3 million people. We'll see what the population comes out after the current ongoing census is completed. We have a database that includes about 70,000 wetland habitats and a lot of characteristics. I'll show you some pictures of some of the habitats. Just, there's a lot of variation. Different mosquitoes are in different places. We've got a lot of information that tells us historically which mosquitoes have we found in certain habitats, when in the year, so that makes it a lot easier to figure out where to send our people. Finally, we also have about 30,000 woodland habitats classified the same way. We can use it the same way. This is our commission for 2020, and you'll notice Commissioner Beard and Commissioner Wolf. And you'll notice, um, Commissioner Beard and Commissioner Wolf, um, probably a lot of other familiar names as well. And, um, I'd like to take this moment just to express thanks to this commission. We've had, um, I don't know if I'd say trying times, but we've had to chart a way to get our finances and, um, our resources and everything back into order after three very high service demand years and, uh, as a commission and as management of the district. I think we've worked pretty well together to figure out the best way to achieve that, because I've got some good news to announce at the end of this presentation for you. Uh, this is the only slide I'm gonna show you with, with money. The top shows the maximum amount we could levy, and that amount went up seven percent between twenty nineteen and twenty twenty. It's based on property valuations throughout the seven county district. The next line shows the amount we recommended to our commission that we levy. The commission agreed with that amount. Um, the increase there is two percent in twenty twenty over twenty nineteen. If you look at the bottom line, that's our budget. Budget went up one percent, primarily, um, wages, health insurance, benefits, the same kinds of things you all are, are dealing with every day. And finally, the line above that shows the piece of our total levy that comes from Scott County. And you actually went down just a little bit, essentially stayed the same. And I don't make these numbers up. The, um, Department of Revenue tells us these numbers. Basically, we give them, uh, here's the amount we want to levy. Here's the amount our commission has approved that we levy, and then they break it up. Um, I don't know what kind of algorithm they use, but I assume it's how, uh, property values have changed in each county relative to the whole. Let's get into, um, well, I'm an entomologist by training, and of course, the biology is more interesting to me. The money is useful, because it allows us to do our job, but the biology is what, uh, we use to figure out, okay, how can we best do our job? Mosquitoes develop like butterflies. They, they start as an egg, they hatch into a larva. The larva lives in water. The larva goes through four stages. Then it becomes a pupa, which is analogous to the cocoon, cocoon of a butterfly, turns into an adult inside the pupa. Uh, this cycle can take place over five to seven days in the summer. You have the eggs in the soil, you get a rain, the mosquito larvae come out. There's about four days, uh, during which the mosquito larvae are young enough for us to treat them adequately. Then for the next two days, they're pupy, then after that, they become an adult. Within a day of emerging from the pupa, the adults are ready to go out, and, uh, the females find their first blood meal. The females need a blood meal to be able to develop eggs. This next slide shows you many different varied habitats, water-holding, either natural or artificial habitats, where mosquito larvae can develop different species, like different types of habitats. We understand which kinds of habitats are preferred by which type of mosquito, when, during the season, which allows us to target our surveillance. We have our people check these places to make sure the mosquitoes are there, and then depending on how many mosquito larvae are in there, decide whether or not to treat those. In some cases, on the right, you can see the artificial containers. You can get rid of a lot of those containers, and if you do that, then there's no place for the mosquitoes to develop, and you can eliminate the problem that way. But the take-home message is, is just mosquitoes can develop in lots of different places. Uh, I remember about seventeen, eighteen years ago, going out with some of the staff, and we found a G.I. Joe that was stuck in the soil, and the top of its head was chopped half off, so there was water in it, and there were mosquito larvae in it. So, and, well, you can, they're very adept at finding places to survive. This slide shows you a lot of different names of mosquitoes. Don't worry about the names. The, the real take-home, again, is each one has its own biology that we understand, so we can use that to target our surveillance and control operations. The lower left shows six mosquito-borne diseases that are transmitted in Minnesota, some very rare, like triple E. Zika is basically an exotic that comes in from outside, but a potential vector is sometimes found in Minnesota. Uh, so we include it in this list. But again, you'll notice each one is associated with a different mosquito, which means there's a different facet of the, the surveillance and control program designed, so we can understand what the risk of those diseases are within the district. The mainstay of our program is larval control. When the larvae are in the water, they can't get away. Yes, we may not have very much time to get to them, but at least we have a good idea of how to find them and how to get to them quickly. We use three biological larval control materials. BTI or Bacillus transiensis isrolensis is a bacterium that was discovered in sick mosquito larvae in Israel. It is, uh, specific to mosquitoes and some very closely related biting flies. Uh, it's primarily, uh, formulated on ground-up corn cob. That's what the helicopters are spreading, when you see the helicopters. At least most of the, the time, that's what's being applied by the helicopters. Bacillus sphericus is another bacterium. It's related to BTI. It's more useful in wetlands that stay wet, and it can last longer. BTI, you put it out, it does its job and disappears in twenty-four hours. S- sphericus can develop in mosquito larvae, control the larvae. There can be new sphericus there, that then if more mosquitoes come, uh, they can be there to control the larvae as well, so you get a longer control effect. Um, there's a much smaller area in the district that has those characteristics, so we don't use as much sphericus, but it's an important part of the control program. At the bottom is spinosid, that's a third biological. It's also from a different bacterium. It was developed for agricultural use in the nineteen nineties. In two thousand and three, Clark Mosquito Control created formulations of spinosid that are specific for mosquito larvae, and we integrate spinosid in as well. Having three biologicals means we can shift, at least between BTI and between spinosid, and you can help control resistance that way. The final larval control material is called methoprine. It's a little different than the other three in that, um, it is the structure of methoprine. The molecular structure is very similar to a hormone that controls insect development in mosquitoes. That hormone controls whether it remains a larva or becomes a pupa. Methoprine disrupts that, which is how it controls, and it, again, is very specific against mosquitoes. There are different versions that are good against other insects, but methoprine is specific against mosquitoes. We augment larval control with adult control. We use synthetic pyrethroids. These are based, mo, in a, their molecular structure is very similar to a natural product, but one of these molecules lasts longer, and we can use it in targeted sprays that will give some relief for a week or so. The other two are, uh, materials we put out as a fog. We apply them, they do their job, and then the molecule breaks down and disappears, so you don't have to worry about other organisms being injured or implicated or, um, hindered in any way by it. I'd like to review the three more common diseases. The most common is West Nile virus. It got into the United States in nineteen ninety-nine. It's an exotic disease. It got into Minnesota in two thousand and two. However, there are four species of mosquitoes that existed in Minnesota that turned out to be very efficient vectors of this disease. The top two in the upper left, pipians and restuans, transmit it from birds. Rest, uh, pipians in some parts of the country, and we suspect in Minnesota can also transmit it to people. Uh, salinarius and tarsalis definitely bring it from birds to people. The pipians and restuans are in the, um, stormwater structures, which is why we do a lot of catch basin treatments and why we work with cities to treat some other stormwater structures as well. What it does is it builds up in the bird population first, and then it spills over into people. And by knowing how abundant these mosquitoes are, and also, um, just watching what's happening to the birds, we test the mosquitoes for the virus. Uh, when we see the infection rates going up, we can get together with the Health Department, put out the alarm, let people know the risk is up. Mr. Chair, you had a question?
Nope, not yet.
Okay. The next one is lacrosse encephalitis. Uh, this is a, a long-time disease. It's, it's a North American disease. The vector in the upper left is, uh, the tree hole mosquito. There are two exotic species, one eighties japonicus, which is now established in Minnesota. The other eighties albupictus gets into, um, tire recycling facilities. They bring in tires from farther south. The mosquito comes in the tires, and so we have a lot of surveillance at these facilities and work with them that when we find the mosquito, we can eliminate it. It hasn't been able to survive the winter yet here. Uh, we don't know how long it will be before it warms up enough during the winter that it can survive the winter. But the common factor for these mosquitoes is where the larvae develop. They develop in tires, they develop in artificial containers, which is why we have a program to get rid of tires, why a lot of our public education involves teaching people, make sure your storm gutters aren't plugged up, make sure you get rid of anything that holds water. If you do that, um, these mosquitoes won't have any place to develop, and the disease risk will go way down for you. Uh, these mosquitoes don't travel very far, so if you find an area where there is a lot of containers or a lot of tires, and you eliminate that, you can eliminate the local disease risk. Finally, Jamestown Canyon is, it's, it's been known since the nineteen fifties, but it really started to become a bigger issue in Minnesota and Wisconsin in the last three years. Nobody is exactly sure why. Uh, which species of mosquitoes transmit it is not exactly known, although a major clue is, when you look at West Nile virus, or you look at lacrosse encephalitis, they both occur in August and September primarily. That's when those vector mosquitoes tend to be the most abundant. Also, in the case of West Nile virus, you start to see it building up in birds in, in June, and it gets in June and July. Once the level in birds gets high enough, then it can spill out into people. Jamestown Canyon, on the other hand, has cases starting in April and May and through the summer. So it means mosquitoes that are available and biting people in April and May are vector mosquitoes. There's a group of mosquitoes that, um, it's about a dozen species that are being studied by the district, the Minnesota Department of Health. There's a, um, multi-state consortium called the Center of Excellence for Vector Control, based at the University of Wisconsin in Madison. We work with them. They work with Michigan State. They work with the Michigan Department of Health, Illinois Department of Health. They work with a lot of other mosquito control agencies in Ohio, Illinois, Wisconsin, Michigan, the Dakotas, Minnesota. So we can put all of our data together, because, um, Jamestown Canyon has been increasing in Wisconsin as well. We share a lot of mosquitoes with Wisconsin, so sampling is ongoing in all these places to try to figure out which of these mosquitoes are the vectors. On the other hand, since we know that it does occur in the spring, yes, it's a low number of cases, but since it does occur in the spring, and we know that it is associated with a group of mosquitoes, even if we don't know which one, part of our control program is designed to control all those mosquitoes, so we've been emphasizing that more recently in the last two or three years. This slide shows the number of cases of each of these three diseases in Minnesota in twenty eighteen and twenty nineteen. If you start on the last left, you'll see there were no cases of lacrosse encephalitis in either twenty eighteen or twenty nineteen statewide. Uh, on the right, West Nile virus, there, what, twenty eighteen was an active year for West Nile virus. There were sixty-three cases in the state as a total, nineteen of which were in the district. The Health Department investigates all those cases to figure out, well, where were they likely exposed? Some of the district cases were likely exposed outside of the district, some were exposed in the district. But, uh, you'll notice in twenty nineteen, there's a lot fewer West Nile cases. Nationwide, there were a lot fewer West Nile cases in twenty nineteen. The summer was a lot cooler overall in twenty nineteen than twenty eighteen. What we saw in twenty eighteen were the, the bird-related vectors build up faster in twenty eighteen than twenty nineteen. The infection rate in the bird-related mosquitoes was much higher. Out of six hundred samples, a hundred and fifty were infected. In twenty nineteen, there were five infected samples out of about seven hundred samples. So, uh, and it, that's just five, ten degrees. Uh, of the, the two vectors of, of birds, pipians and, and restuans, restuans likes cooler conditions, pipians like slightly warmer. Pipians was much more numerous in twenty eighteen than it was in twenty nineteen. Pipians is also the vector that's been associated with feeding on people as well as birds, in other words, could infect people. So we think that's what explains the difference in twenty eighteen and twenty nineteen. Jamestown Canyon, on the other hand, went up in twenty nineteen. It's still a minimum number of cases, but, um, again, the spring mosquitoes weren't all that, uh, weren't more abundant overall in twenty nineteen than twenty eighteen. The season was a little longer in twenty nineteen, especially, um, twenty eighteen was, um, started out cold, then got hot really fast. That compressed the spring season greatly. We don't only do mosquito control, even though that's what the name of our agency is. Um, we also monitor for tick-borne disease. There is no cost-effective, environmentally-friendly method of tick control. So the way we protect the public is kind of twofold. One, we have a rodent sampling program that we conduct every year. The ticks first feed on rodents, then later ticks, that's, ticks are infected by feeding on rodents. Question?
Uh, just an observation. I think this is accurate. Um, guinea hens love ticks. And I know my daughter put, uh, guinea hens on her little farm down on the sewer, and, uh, the ticks seemed to go away. Another thing I heard is that possums eat thousands of ticks a week. Have you heard that?
Um, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Beard, I hadn't heard about possums eating ticks. I have heard about, um, birds eating ticks. And when you're talking about ticks, are you talking about adult ticks, the, the biggest ones you can see? Or I'm talking about all the different ticks that, um, I found on all the animals?
Uh, ticks is ticks, as far as I'm concerned, but I know there's a tiny little deer tick you can hardly see, and then there's the, the big woodland tick that, of course, we always find when we're running around the edge of the yard. But just an, an interesting observation, I did not know that possums ate them too. I, I'd heard about the guinea hens. Or guinea hens, um, eating them. They go crazy on them, apparently, and when they're spending all their day in the weeds, pecking away, that's what they're doing, so. I don't know if we can have the cities overrun with guinea hens. That might be a problem.
They use goats for, um.
Yeah, we do.
Poison oak control, poison ivy control, so, um, I wonder what some of my field staff would say if they found out they had to take ten thousand guinea hens out to the field, but, um.
New day.
New day is right. I'm glad they'll eat them, and I don't have to, but, um.
I don't want to derail you. Just an interesting observation. I like this. We all hate ticks, and I just happened to hear that.
It actually segues nicely back to tick risk, because, um, the immature ticks, that, they, they go through three stages. They hatch as a, a larva, which that feeds on mice. Most of the infected ticks are infected as larvae. Then they fall off the animal, uh, go to the next developmental stage, get on another animal. And the nymphal stage is extremely small, so is the larval stage. The larvae tend not to be infected, but a lot of the nymphs are. People are bitten by the nymphs, and they're so small, you all don't even recognize them. They're much smaller than a sesame seed. Um, you know how small an adult deer tick is? That's most of what you see as an adult, and they're extremely small. Um, but the, uh, the nymphs are really the primary, uh, danger to people. Um, the rodent sampling picks up the nymphs, and so that enables us to, to tell people when the nymphs are active and remind everybody to check themselves. Question?
No, just according to online, I did some looking here. Uh, deer ticks are the favorite of Guinea, uh.
Guinea hens, okay.
Yeah, guinea hens. Deer ticks are the favorite.
Google it.
Look at that.
Unbelievable, the information here.
What a guy.
Um, deer ticks are the, deer ticks are the favorite as compared to wood ticks, or it just said?
It just said that. I, 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 I can't go beyond what that, that said. It just, this article that I'm searching here referred to deer ticks.
Which search? Did you, did you just do, um, ticks and guinea hens?
I just, I did, in Google, I just said, what animal kills the most ticks?
Okay.
And then, and it came up with guinea hens.
I'll try it.
Possums are on there too.
It's from, uh, Wood Tick Weekly?
Anyway, um, while I remember that. Anyway, while I remember that. Suffice it to say that Alex is heavily involved in getting information from our staff, and then crafting communications with the public. We also control biting gnats in the rivers, and BTI is what we use. It's a different formulation. The black flies are so closely related to mosquitoes that BTI will control them effectively. The way you make a treatment is measure the river flow. There are certain stations around the district that have river flow. We use that to be able to figure out how much BTI liquid needs to go into the river, because you have to get the concentration up, and you also have to disperse it evenly through the river to get to all of them. We put out samplers, so we know when the larvae are there, and when threshold levels are met. We can do a treatment, then we can go back and check some of the samplers and see if the larvae have been killed or not. Finally, here's a slide that Alex added, showing service delivered to Scott County in 2019. And you can see there's lots of different kinds of service, and I'm not going to go through all the numbers, but you were given a report as well, but it's seen there's a lot of different things that go on. And again, these are all targeted at different, different parts of the biologies of the various mosquito species. This may be the most interesting slide, might not look the most interesting, but from the standpoint of what we plan to do, I said earlier on, we have some good news. The first two are the things that everybody does, you know, you try to live within your budget, and get the most out of the resources that you can. We work very hard at that. Disease risk reduction is one of our primary goals. On the other hand, in 2014 through 2016, we used a lot of reserves because there was heavy service demand. And starting even before 2016, we worked with our commission to figure out, okay, how are we going to get everything back in order? And by the end of 2019, we have been able to get our reserves to where they need to be. Part of what allowed us to achieve that was scaling back some of the services we give, primarily larval control. Larval control is a lot more expensive than adult control. On the other hand, larval control, if you do it well, gets rid of a lot more mosquitoes for your dollar. So we scaled back larval control from areas where the fewest people live. We now should be able to start replacing that larval control, and we plan to do it in two ways. The cattail mosquito is a very pestiferous mosquito. Last year was a heavy rainfall year. Typically, the year after a heavy rainfall year, you find more cattail mosquito larvae in more acres of cattail wetlands. So we have a lot more acres to treat this year. That mosquito is important, one, because it is, it's pestiferous, it's a nasty mosquito, but two, it's a secondary vector of eastern equine encephalitis. You may have heard of the outbreak of eastern that happened in Michigan, and also happened on the east coast. We had two horse cases of eastern in Minnesota, in Otter Tail County. We also had some grouse that a hunter turned in because they looked so weird, and they were tested, and they turned out to have been infected in east. So there is eastern out there, it's extremely rare, but the cattail mosquito in other parts of the country has been implicated in transmission, so it seems like an important mosquito for us to deal with. We won't use all of the additional funds on the cattail mosquito. We plan to use the rest of it against spring mosquitoes because of the Jamestown Canyon issue, but staff will be conducting a lot of surveillance farther out this spring as soon as we can, and we'll use the results of that surveillance to decide what we're going to do with our ability to deliver some additional services. Finally, the second thing is, last year, there was legislation proposed. It didn't pass, but it basically would have given, allowed certain cities to regulate pesticides, instead of allowing the Department of Ag to regulate pesticides. It went down, but the legislation is back, and the legislation is, one, it would create a hodgepodge, everybody would have their own regulations, so how are our people going to know when, you know, you go to one city and you follow the control program that's well within regulations, you go to another one, maybe it's not. So we're working with the legislators to get exemptions for mosquito control, so we can do especially the vector-related things. I think the Department of Ag is working to defeat the legislation altogether, but we're not hedging our bets. And no, it's just, the political situation is just too hard to call right now. So seems like having a good relationship with the legislators is a better situation to be in anyway, and to be seen as part of the solution. It comes from primarily a desire to protect pollinators, and we've got a longstanding history of working to show how our program is designed to not impact pollinators, and that's been really helpful for us this year. Finally, we've had a hard time attracting seasonal staff, especially early in the season. That's probably not news to you, I bet you're having a hard time attracting staff as well, everybody, as there's four hire signs everywhere, which is a great thing, but on the other hand, our employees got together a year ago and came up with a lot of new ideas about how to reach more populations. And you don't need special training. Basically, you need to be 18-years-old and have good, a driver's license and a good driving record, and an interest to learn about the outdoors. We can train you the program quickly. One of the reasons Alex was hired was to expand greatly our social media reach, and preliminary indications are that it's helping us out this year. It's not a silver bullet, but it's been a big issue for us, and it's really nice to see some of these new efforts working. With that, I would take any questions. Also, my contact information and Alex's contact information is there. Definitely call the district, the main district number if you want to reach us. If you don't have these numbers, have Commissioners Wolf and Beard hunt us down for you if necessary, but whatever way of communicating, we've got lots of information. If you need some information or have questions or concerns, let us know, because we can respond to them and we can help you out.
Thank you very much. Any questions?
Thank you, Stephen.
I've got one question, and I'm just going to ask it because it's the question of the day. All of these diseases have the word virus after them, so was there any correlation, or do we expect any correlation between coronavirus and mosquito transmission?
Mr. Chair, good question. One thing that all mosquito-borne viruses have in common is the ability to infect mosquitoes and reproduce themselves inside of mosquitoes. Normally, a mosquito takes a blood meal, the virus is in the blood. The virus has to infect the mosquito and get to its salivary gland, so it has to get through the blood system of the mosquito. Coronavirus is not able to do that, so no coronavirus has been shown to be transmitted by a vector like a mosquito. Never say never, but the likelihood is very small.
Yeah, I figured just with the topic of the day, I would ask that.
But it's a good question.
Last question, where were those grouse found that were infected? North, south?
The grouse were in the southwest.
Interesting, it's interesting. All right, any other questions? Thank you very much. It's timely. It looks like we might be seeing those helicopters buzzing sooner than later with the way the weather's going.
Here, here, that's, I think you're probably right, probably in April sometime. Many thanks also for working with us, so we could visit Carver County first, and then come on over here and visit you all too. This is always a fun thing to do every year, so.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Stephen, you should know the Census was here, taking your place while you were in Carver County. They're fishing in the same pond for summer workers, and they're offering $22 an hour, so you might be up against that this year. Unless they could count people while they're counting mosquitoes at the same time, I don't know.
I guess it depends on whether running around in wetlands is more attractive to you as an employee than going where you have to go to count people.
Yeah.
Thanks, Stephen.
All right, that ends our agenda, a little bit out of sequence there, but.
Motion to adjourn.
We've got a motion to adjourn. Is there a second?
Second.
Someone wants to get going here.
So we have a motion, a second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.